I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday evening, April 27, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please advise the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone who is, if there is anyone who is recording this meeting, please identify yourself by raising your hand. Okay, members of the Board who are participating remotely, myself, Mary Power, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. The Board will enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Fire Chief Steve Murphy. The Board will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. Roll call vote, Joe Fisher? Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Michelle, if you could maybe put a, put something up that says the Board will reconvene at 7 o'clock, that would be great.
Yep, okay, I did do that.
Thank you. Okay, the Board of Selectmen is, is, as mentioned at the start, we are reconvening in open session at 7:23 PM. The next item of business on our agenda, oh, I'm sorry, before going through that, we read the disclaimer at the beginning of the meeting, but at this point, I would like to ask that if anyone wishes to record this meeting, besides Harbor Media, I see Mr. Rowe from WATD is recording the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Rowe, and welcome. If there's anyone else who intends to record this meeting, either video or taking still photographs, could you please raise your hand and identify yourself at this time? Okay, seeing none, the next item of business on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have a set of minutes for March 25. I'd accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes dated March 25, 2021.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business on the agenda is the request for outdoor table service and modification of a liquor license for Eat Well, Inc., doing business as Tosca, 14 North Street. I believe we are joined by Emily Wentworth, Mr. Brian Berry, representing Tosca. I believe we also have others representing from Tosca, joining our meeting, as well as members of our restaurant reopening, Lieutenant De Napoli and Sergeant Kilroy. Welcome and thank you, everyone. Tom, is Emily going to be kind of walking the Board and the public through this request?
We have, I believe, Emily Wentworth is here, perhaps. Sergeant Kilroy is here, there he is. There's a few members of the team, perhaps Emily could start off.
Yeah, I'll do a quick introduction.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to. And then I will just note that the applicant's representative is on the line as well, Brian Berry, if there are questions after my summary. So I'm not certain whether I can screen share.
Yes, you can.
Or not, okay, great. Bear with me just a second, I'm going to pull up the plan. Since we received the application, the outdoor table seating area has been revised on a couple of occasions. So while your original application proposed 38 seats, the current proposal and what the restaurant reopening working group would recommend is that this area, if you can see my cursor, be approved with an estimated number of seats being 20. So you can see here, there are actually five tables, but there appears to be sufficient room to fit another table in or modify the size of these tables and still comply with all COVID separation requirements and, you know, ADA accessibility. So the reason for a number of the modifications was that this public sidewalk, which runs along the driveway to Station Street, so to orient you, and I apologize for not doing that sooner, Mill Street is over here, this is the rear of the restaurant, and then this is the driveway to the Station Street parking lot. So they, they, the restaurant worked with us very closely to make sure that this existing sidewalk would meet ADA requirements, so they increased the size of that. In so doing, they ended up losing a row of seats, but now they have room to kind of reconfigure tables to fit things in. So, and then the one other item I'd note is that the application had proposed hours that were a little bit outside of the weekday hours specified in the policy, so there is a proposed condition to address that issue.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the restaurant reopening team, Sergeant Kilroy or Lieutenant De Napoli, anything to add before I invite the proponent to make any comments?
We don't have anything further, ma'am. We all discussed it and we're comfortable with the resolution that we came to, and everyone has worked well together on this.
Great, thank you, Sergeant. Mr. Berry, I know that you're recognizing Tosca, and thank you for being here tonight. Anything you would have to add from Ms. Wentworth's presentation with respect to the request?
No, she, she did everything, she said it exactly perfect. The only other, the only minor thing is that's actually the side door of Tosca as opposed to the back door. The back doors, we wouldn't put tables back there, but we really looked at that space. Clearly, there is plenty of space there, more space than, you know, say Square Cafe has, but we really kind of made it, you know, COVID friendly, and as you guys know, the type of business we run, we are very cognizant of every safety guideline that's put in front of us, so it'll be no different in this situation.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for either Emily or for Mr. Berry?
What are you serving for dinner this evening?
I don't know. Kevin wasn't feeling great today, so I'm not sure if he has anything too good. We're opening the Beach House tomorrow, so that's kind of a nightmare for us.
Is there any need for barriers? Because I know in other locations with restaurants, when we have outdoor seating, there are barriers just to make sure that there's no errant car that unintentionally goes toward where people are dining. Is there, I don't see barriers here. I'm not suggesting we need them, but I just want to know that that has been considered and determined not to be needed.
It was considered by the group, this, this area, because it's separated by, you know, at least 10 feet from the driveway, and it's really not a high traffic area or, you know, a high-speed area. Sergeant Kilroy in particular said it probably wasn't necessary, he would be comfortable with the stanchions.
Okay. And Emily, I don't know if you can show on the map, where are the dumpsters that service the restaurant? And I'm assuming that they are out of, at least out of sight and out of smell of the diners who will be there.
I'll pull the plan up, but Brian, yeah, you might be better.
The dumpsters are, so like that table that she pointed out over, it's hard for me to kind of tell you, but if you.
Start moving your cursor, Emily, and Hill.
Is it?
Yeah, so that table right there, if you hook around that corner, the dumpsters are, keep going, keep going, that, yeah, the dumpsters are way over there behind a fence.
Yep.
Yeah, so the dumpsters are like way over there behind the fence.
And, and what about deliveries? Are the deliveries made through that side door?
No, they're, so that whole same area where the dumpsters are, that's why I was kind of clarifying, that is actually the side door as opposed to the back door. There are, you know, two handicap spots and two regular spots that, the two regular spots right now, we actually use for the curbside pickup, but the dumpsters are all back there and, and there's no, yeah, it's, it's an isolated area.
Yep. And have you heard from or been in contact with neighbors who might be affected either by smell or noise or anything associated with the outdoor dining?
We have, we, the most impacted neighbor would be Mr. Shaw, I believe his last name is.
Yeah, he's.
And he, exactly, yeah, so, and he actually lives in the building. We spoke with him and he is in full support of it. We spoke with Christian, who owns the Liberty Grill, and he is in full support of it. And we tried to get in contact with the tutor, apt tutoring, I believe is what it is, but they are actually not even occupying the building right now, they're completely remote with the tutoring and the COVID situation with schools, so.
Yeah, and they face North Street, I think.
Correct, yeah, they're an entirely different area.
Yeah. And this may be in the plan, but are you, will there be music outside?
No. I mean, we didn't apply for it and we didn't, we really don't, there isn't the space for it, because we prefer the tables as opposed to paying for entertainment, but, I mean, we do, when Baker, you know, Governor Baker allows the indoor, we will probably just continue that in the wine room when we can, you know, utilize that area inside the restaurant.
I've got no other questions, really looking forward to having this set up and, and dining there, so thank you.
Awesome.
Bill, questions?
Just briefly, Brian, good to see you again, been a while.
Good seeing you, Bill.
Yeah, you look good.
Yeah. You as well.
I think this is great, you know, Brian, I'm surprised you guys haven't come in earlier for this request.
I know.
It's been such a, such a successful addition to downtown to see it, so it's great that, you know, Tosca's doing this, obviously the cafe's got outdoor seating, that's organic to the operations over there, and that's a wonderful addition. I think this is going to be great. I would just say, very generally, to Tom, is that, you know, hearing the Governor speak recently, I'm anticipating the state of emergency to be ending likely in August, and these businesses, you know, they need to be made aware that they only have 60 days past the end of the state of emergency, and then special permits are going to be filed, third parties are going to be involved. A lot of these restaurants want to continue this style of operations, and I'd ask you just to work with Susan and Emily and others about what relief they're going to need to continue to do this, because I would hate to see a state of emergency come and go and a restaurant owner does not know what their responsibilities are to try to continue to do this. So 60 days after the state of emergency, and this is going to be great, Brian, looking forward to seeing you down there.
We look forward to it, too, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I would just add to Bill's excellent point that it, it's going to be really, it would be a good idea for the town and all of the restaurants who have the outdoor table service to be in close communication about what the restaurant's desire or intent is. I could see where some restaurants may want to discontinue the outdoor table service after the state of emergency is lifted and as we roll into the fall, where others may not. And just to Bill's point, that, that takes time, it adds some complexity. We, the, the, the sooner we have those conversations, the better for all parties, so that we're not disrupting, not disrupting businesses. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to this application? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion, and Joe, I kind of remember when we did these, when we did these a year ago, do we have to read the entire thing or do we, is there a little bit of a shortcut that kind of says, as presented in the vote list?
Mary, when we were doing multiple ones, we would, we would use, we would have to read it once and then apply it to the, to the other motions.
Okay.
But I think we need to read it once.
Okay. I'd accept a motion. I'd accept a motion.
Mary, you were, you were trying to spare Bill and me, and we both appreciate it.
Just trying to keep it moving.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so, but I'll make, I'll read the first vote, Joe, and then you can take the second one. So I'd make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the OTS application of the applicant in accordance with the plan attached here, too, also known as the approved plan, and subject to the following conditions. Site-specific condition, the OTS area shall be laid out in a manner that maintains six feet of separation between all tables. Tables within the OTS area shall additionally maintain six feet of distance from any walkway or heavily traveled path, inclusive of public sidewalks, too. The service area designated on the plan shall be relocated to the inside of the restaurant, three. No amplified sound nor other entertainment shall be permitted in the OTS premises, four. In accordance with the ABCC guidelines for extension of premises to patio and outdoor areas, the applicant shall, A, enclose the OTS premises by a fence, rope, planters, or other means to prevent access from a public walkway. Such enclosure must be in place in a manner satisfactory to the Hingham Public Safety officials prior to opening of the OTS premises, and B, commit to providing management personnel dedication dedicated to the OTS premises as there is no clear view from the inside business to the OTS area. Five, in accordance with the OTS policy, the OTS premises shall close no later than the earlier of 10:00 PM on Sundays through Thursdays and 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays, or one hour after the kitchen of the establishment closes for food service. B, general conditions. Outside table service shall be permitted in compliance with the approved plan as modified by this approval, two. The location, size, and layout of the OTS premises approved herein may not be modified without further approval. Any request for modification must be submitted in writing with detail as to the proposed modifications to restaurantopening@hingham-ma.gov. Three. Addition of amenities such as tents or outdoor heating units is subject to further review and approval. Requests for such amenities shall be sent in writing to restaurantopening@hingham-ma.gov. Four. Approval holder shall be responsible for regular cleaning of trash and food in the OTS premises and shall not allow trash, food, or other nutrients to accumulate or be deposited intentionally or unintentionally into storm drains. Five. Approval holder shall fully comply with all applicable state and local laws, regulations, and standards, including without limitation, A, Town of Hingham COVID-19 temporary policy regarding restaurant outdoor table service, B, Massachusetts COVID-19 mandatory workplace safety standards, C, Massachusetts COVID-19 safety standards and checklist restaurants, D, ABCC advisory regarding guidelines for extension of premises to patio and outdoor areas, six. The approval may be subject to additional public safety conditions to ensure the safety of the diners, pedestrians, and vehicles if determined by the town that an unsafe condition exists once outside table service is in operation, and seven. The establishment may be subject to periodic inspection for compliance with this approval. Failure to comply with this approval may result in suspension or revocation of this approval and in fines in accordance with Massachusetts law.
Well done, I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. And Joe, you want to do the second one?
I'll do the second one, I know it's really lengthy, but here's the second motion. That the Board approve the request of Eat Well, Inc., doing business as Tosca pursuant to COVID-19 Order Number 35, to temporarily alter the licensed premises under liquor license number 00009-RS-0528, to expire on the date that is 60 days after the end of the state of emergency, or the date COVID-19 Order Number 50 is modified or rescinded by state action as defined in the OTS policy, whichever is earlier.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Mr. Berry and Representatives from Tosca, thank you for joining us, thank you for working with our restaurant reopening group. Emily, Lieutenant De Napoli, Sergeant Kilroy, other members of the restaurant reopening group, thank you for your continued efforts to help maintain the vitality of, of our Hingham restaurants, very much appreciated. The next item of business, actually, we have two items. These are renewals of concession agreements between the town, and, and one is with the South Shore Model Railway Club, and the second is with the Bear Cove Fire Museum. We're joined by Kathy Riley this evening, Kathy, thank you very much. I might ask if you could just give the Board an overview of both of these agreements, and then we'll, we'll open it up for questions.
Sure. These are extensions of their lease with the space that they take at the Bear Cove buildings that are in the park, and they are, they are four-year agreements. Typically, they renew every five years, but last year because of COVID, it was a one-year renewal, and so this is the balance of their usual five-year lease term. And there are no changes to the terms of it or anything, so it's really just going forward the way they have been. They're both, they're basically been closed for COVID, obviously, but this is for the next four years, and then that's it, really. Nothing has changed, so pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Bill, maybe, Bill, maybe I'll invite you to lead off with any questions you have for Kathy or any comments with respect to these agreements.
So the concession agreement for the Railroad Club, is the Board of Health okay with this?
Um, I don't.
Is it going to be food? Are they serving food or?
I don't believe so.
I can take that, Kathy, if you want.
Yeah.
Sorry, Bill, so this is a, the concession agreement is a, is a term that the National Park Service uses.
I got it.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's a term that they use for the general term of a lease.
Okay, great, yeah, I was wondering if they were going to be serving food there, I wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, they got me with that, too, when I got here.
I know, I know that they have a lot of kids, okay, great, that's all I've done, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Joe, any questions?
No, I think these agreements are good, just as a, in terms of the consideration in both agreements, there's an obligation for the payment of the costs of maintenance and repair and all utilities. I don't know what that, what order of magnitude is that, what kind of financial burden is at place on these organizations.
I don't know offhand, Joe, I would venture to guess that it's extremely small.
Small, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're not open all that much, and so the ongoing maintenance is virtually nil, I think.
And I think that in, at least with the Bear Cove Fire Museum, I know that where there has been an interest in capital improvements, the Fire Museum has applied for CPC grants.
Right.
Yep. And I know that one of the things that's important to the town, at least, is that there be insurance coverage for these, and I see that the agreements provide for that. So that's it, I've got no other questions, I really appreciate your, your work on this.
Okay, there's one more coming, but it doesn't expire till June 21st, and that's the youth football, youth baseball, softball, and hockey.
On Lynchfield.
Great. On Lynchfield. Is there, and members of the public who have a question or wish to make a comment regarding the two concession agreements for the facilities inside Bear Cove Park? Seeing none, I'd accept, I'd accept a motion for the Model Railway Club.
I make a motion to sign the concession agreement between the Town of Hingham and South Shore Model Railway Club Incorporated for a period of four years effective from May 21, 2021 through May 21, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the second agreement?
I'll move to sign the concession agreement between the Town of Hingham and the Bear Cove Fire Museum for a period of four years effective from May 21, 2021 through May 21, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Terrific, thank you. The next item, and thank you very much, Kathy, appreciate you being here this evening and your work on these agreements, and we'll see you in a few weeks with the next one.
Right, thank you.
The next item of business is an update on the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility Project. This evening, we are joined, we are joined by, by Kevin Whalen, the Director of the South Shore Country Club, as well as Christine Smith, the Chair of the South Shore Country Club Committee, Bill Friend, a member of the committee. Just before starting, Kevin, does, does the Country Club Management Committee, is there a quorum where they need to call to order, or, I only see two members, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anybody?
No, we just had a meeting prior to this, there's only two members on.
Okay, terrific. Kevin, you know, thank you, we had asked if you could come in at some point and give us an update on the Maintenance Facility Project. I believe you've sent the Board a presentation, and thank you, that was helpful. I'll turn it over to you to brief the Board and brief the public on this important project.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to kind of, you know, provide a status update on the project at the Country Club. Along with me tonight is Taylor McDonald, representing Palmeroy Associates, which is a project manager, Chris Roddy from Roddy McGrudy Design Collaborative, and also I have staff on as well, Chris Riley, a golf professional, and Jake Silver, golf superintendent, are both on as well, so just want to introduce the team. As an intro, the 2020 Annual Town Meeting approved a $2.2 million design and build of a new maintenance and storage structure. We have been working since then. The project manager will review the steps that we have taken since the Town Meeting approval, and kind of go over the schedule and the current budget for the project, so Taylor can take over the, the presentation.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, I'm Taylor McDonald with Palmeroy Associates, we're the owners' project manager for the South Shore Country Club Maintenance and Pool Facility Project. I'm going to bring up a quick PowerPoint here that kind of outlines everything that Kevin just said. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Hey. So the quick agenda for what we plan to go through tonight, just a quick project overview, the management committee that we've been working with weekly, really, since we've been hired, when we were hired, as well as the architect, what we've completed to date, then the architect will talk about our site layout, as well as our design, we'll go through the budget, and then we'll go through our proposed schedule at this point. So our weekly meetings are conducted with Kevin Whalen, the South Shore Country Club Executive Director, JR Fry, the Hingham Town Engineer, Chris Riley, the head golf professional, Jake Silva, Corps Superintendent, and William Friend, our town member that's on our team as well. Also, meeting, weekly during those meetings is us and the architect. So just a quick overview, in case some public may not be familiar with this, we were asked to look at the maintenance facility and the pool complex at the South Shore Country Club. The first one, the maintenance facility, in 2020, June of 2020, a $2.2 million appropriation was made for the design and construction of a new maintenance facility project there. Right now, they are in kind of dire need of upgrades and more space at the, at the club itself. This would be located behind the 9th Green, if anybody's familiar with that area now. Also, we're looking at the pool complex, which has been shut down due to structural issues there, that was built, originally built in the 1950s, upgraded in the 1980s, and then closed down in 2019. So we're looking at a new pool complex there that will, you know, be able to serve the town for years to come with, it'll be able to service those with special needs, have a splash pad, locker rooms, and work overall with the plans for the South Shore Country Club. And then combined with those is a, is a master plan that we're working on with the architect, basically how the, the club will circulate in and out of traffic, golfers, people using the pool complex, maintenance facility, an overall long-term plan that'll be part of what we're looking at as well. So we were hired in, I believe, October, RFQs were, October of 2020, RFQs were solicited by the town, interviews were conducted, and we were selected. We have over 20 years of experience managing municipal construction projects, and our first, third, first thing we did when we got on board was start the process for the architect. We put out an RFQ for that, we think we got about 12 responses back, shortlisted three, conducted interviews, and RMD Collaborative was selected. Chris Roddy of RMD is on with us today, again, he'll go through the design. But they were selected not only based on their, you know, experience, but we felt very comfortable with them moving forward with the type of work that we were doing. Here's a rundown of what we've accomplished to date. Again, we were hired in October of 2020. Then December of 2020, we hired the architect. We had our first kickoff meeting on January 13, 2021. And we've met weekly since. We've really been on the fast track with this. January 26, our project program was complete. On February 2021, the ANRAD was filed and the wetlands were flagged on site. That was done by SciTech that was working with the the town before actually we came on board. In February 2021, we completed some test pits in the areas of the building. February and March of 21, schematic design was completed. March of 21, schematic estimate was received. In March of 2021, also, our design development got started. We just recently hired our geotechnical engineer. In and around March 16, we put together a memo. Kevin Whalen wanted us to just keep The public and neighbors abreast of kind of what was going on. So we put together a memo that was sent out to everybody, all the butters. On March 22, we had our conservation hearing. That's continued now to May 3. So next week, we'll have our follow up there. March 25, we've had a historical hearing. Everything there was approved conditionally based on some feedback they wanted. We sent them back that feedback about two weeks ago now and haven't heard anything else. So I think everything there is pretty much closed. On March 30, we got design development approval. April 6, we met on site with HM LP to go over how we're gonna be bringing power To these buildings and also coordinate for how the how the club will use power in the future. And on the 12th, we completed our geotechnical borings. Chris, I'm gonna turn it over to you and talk about the site.
Great, thank you. I'm Chris Roddy from RMD. This slide you're looking at now shows an aerial view of the club and the surrounding neighborhood. Fort Hill Street to the left. South Street kind of diagonally up on the top. The area For the proposed development is to the west edge of the site Adjacent to the MBTA tracks and is where the existing administration Maintenance and admin building is currently located. That's where you can see the the three little small buildings labeled A, B, and C on this plan. This this location was Preferred For a number of reasons. One, We tried to maintain the size of the open space to the north As much as possible. That's used by the club during the summer for You know, all sorts of programs, and we want to try to maintain that as much as possible. And second, by positioning the development where we are and Orienting the buildings in such a way, it's Shielding it from the neighbors, the street, and really kind of focusing all of the The activity of the of the maintenance Programs towards the club and not the neighborhood. If we look at the next slide.
Lost my cursor there.
This slide is just a kind of a close up view of the developed site. So you can see we've we've we're proposing a complex of three buildings To house all of the different components of the maintenance team. And As the project has evolved, and since we're kind of working within the constraints of The budget, it's become more of a phased master plan Where in the current phase, Building A would be Built or constructed now With accommodations for Building B and Building C to be constructed In the future. Building A would house the equipment storage and also The equipment, a small equipment maintenance area. If we look at the next slide. We're trying to keep the buildings fairly simple. And, you know, it's somewhat reminiscent of agricultural buildings with the slope of the roof, The horizontal siding. You know, the the patterns of the windows And some other elements that we're adding, like you can see on the bottom, The barn door feature with The windows above it. Really trying to keep the public view a little bit more interesting And suited more suitable to the neighborhood and to the the buildings that already exist on site.
Thanks, Chris. Our next slide here is a budget update. And what we did was we wanted to Kind of show the progression of where we started and where we are now. So I'm gonna I'm gonna focus on this bottom line down here. If you can, you can see it, but I'll also verbalize it as well. This first column was the budget approved by town meeting Based on, I guess, what was available at the time, the 2.2 million. When we came on along with the architect, What we did first was, you know, go through and find out exactly what the needs were of all buildings. So a wash down area, a maintenance area, an equipment storage building. You know, knowing that the the budget was very tight, we wanted to establish a baseline first. So we went through and the architect went through and programmed the building Buildings to find out, you know, really what they needed today. And so that was estimated by RMD's professional estimator After markup and soft costs, you know, obviously, we were we were well over budget here, which, you know, we knew was coming. We knew we had to to scale it down. So After that, we went back and we started to value engineer our buildings, but also Came up with the approach that we really need to make this more of a master plan and focus on one building, Not three, and kind of keep our site costs down as much as possible at this time. So meeting with the committee, we looked at one of the First options we looked at in this center column here Was reducing the square footage of what we're calling Building A, that maintenance building now. Somewhere around 6,000 square feet, they're looking at about 7,000 square feet right now. And, you know, the more we talked about it was, you know, we're just squeezing and squeezing and squeezing. We weren't seeing the savings and they were losing program space. So the club didn't feel comfortable moving in that direction. This option 1B here maintains the maintenance building only, no other buildings, but doesn't You know, doesn't get rid of any square footage. Now, the decision at that time was we knew that really the the cost estimate that we had was right at 2.2 before any Soft costs came into play. And these soft costs that we've estimated here are pretty bare bones. We have really the architect's fees, our fees, Geotechnical engineering, builder's risk, utility company back charges, and some material testing. Really, the What you would need to get the building done with Very minimal effort there as far as soft costs. But the the committee felt it was it was it made sense to move in this direction With the understanding that we were gonna be trying to really scale this down in design and find creative ways to do this. This first building, This 1B option was a pre manufactured building. We're now looking at doing this wood framed To invite smaller contractors into, you know, perform this work and hopefully get the cost down. We're gonna be looking at some ad alternates and even further cost savings. You know, as we move forward here, we're looking at the plantings, interior partitions, Maybe a square footage reduction is part of the ad alternate and reducing pavement. We're also looking at maybe doing some panelized building of the walls on the inside. We're going out for our estimate, our second estimate at the end of this week. So in two weeks, we'll know really well Really where our our value engineering has helped And hopefully bring us back on track there. But So that's the idea all along has been we need to really scale this down as much as possible. It's no surprise To anybody that construction prices have started to surge, especially with materials that we're seeing lately. So that's that's not helping the cause, but In two weeks or so, we'll have a really good idea with our finger on the bubble from an estimator that that shows where this is coming in. And lastly, this is our proposed upcoming schedule. Again, next two weeks, we have some follow up meetings. We have the Conservation Commission on May 3, Planning Board on May 10. Chris and his team plan to complete the construction documents By May 21. We'll have a final cost estimate. Again, May 21, we actually have a cost estimate. That's the one I was referring to. You know, in that time, we'd like to have town review and comment. We'll be doing a QC review of the plans before they go out on the street. Chris will be preparing final documents for bidding, hopefully start bidding around June 21 of this year With an August construction start and a final completion of spring of '22. The pool project, we have not started work on that yet. That's gonna start in conjunction with the maintenance Project. We'll be starting to program that, or I should say, the architect will be starting to program that come this summer In in order to develop really plans For town meeting coming up, to come up with an appropriation for that. That being said, that takes us to the end. We're here to answer any questions. But thank you for letting us present tonight.
Thank you so much. This is very informative. I think Phil Ramsey is the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Country Club. So Bill, maybe I'd invite you to lead off With questions or comments either for Mr. McDonald or Mr. Roddy or or for Kevin.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. I did a nice job putting this all together, and I think knowing the site, this is this is gonna look good. So just a couple Just want to confirm a couple of things. So the 2.2 is gonna cover the cost of the building, correct?
We're hoping it, well, it's gonna need to cover the cost of the building and soft costs.
Okay. And any any idea what the pool might might come in at? Do we need to wait until the estimator confirms that up?
Yeah, we haven't done any preliminary plans of that. The architect hasn't really, you know, dove into that yet. So I I would just be picking a number at this point.
Okay, all right. Is the one building gonna cover all the needs of the club?
Kevin, you want to speak to that?
Well, I think obviously there are needs. I mean, the building that the that our staff is in is an older building. We will look to put some money into that to to upgrade it. I think it'd be a benefit just to get all the equipment out of that building where our staff, you know, has lunch and things of that nature and bring him over Into the storage building. But I, you know, it's it is, I think we all understand that this is now become a master plan that we hope to be able to build out And, you know, into the future as far as, you know, the the full needs. Obviously, it's gonna be a lot better than what we have currently. And so it's a start in the right direction as far as what we can Our employees.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Joe, questions?
Yes, again, thank you for the the presentation. The information is extremely helpful. The town is making a commitment To reduce our our carbon footprint. And I'm wondering to what extent Green aspects of the project are being looked at, whether it's solar panels or Other aspects of the project that I know residents of the town Are looking to, not just to you, but for the entire town, to make that commitment with respect to reducing our carbon footprint.
You know, Joe, I we did try to We initially were looking at a steel building. We were looking at to make the roof that it would be capable of holding a solar Array on the roof. The many of the items that, you know, we we wish to put into the building when we you saw that much larger number. I think it had a lot more green Aspects to it. We've really had to do just a significant amount of cutting. At this point, you know, this building pretty much is, you know, a cold storage building Of like about 5,000 square feet and then about 2,000 square feet of maintenance space. So It's really, you know, a box with like a maintenance building for 2,000 square feet for a mechanic to do his work in. So it's a minimal amount of, I think, footprint at the end of the day. We are heating the building at like 50 degrees in the cold storage area, and then the obviously the maintenance building would be Heated at a little bit warmer temperature. We are looking to do a recycling unit for washing, a wash down station for all the equipment. That the unit is about $42,000, and that's a pretty quick payback with, you know, With the recycling of the water, and obviously you're not paying water rates or sewer rates. So that's a pretty quick comeback payback. So that's one of the things that we will be looking to to move forward on. That would be a green initiative.
And one other question. I suspect this is going to be addressed at the Conservation Commission, but in terms of the siding of the building, are there wetlands issues or Other resource issues that we should be aware of? Taylor?
Yeah, the building is actually outside of the wetlands. So we're staying, Chris, I believe, are we? We're not quite out of the 100, but we're out of the 50, right?
Yeah, that's correct. The to the west side of the site, You know, there's there's a fair amount of of wetlands, and we are out of the 50 foot buffer, but, you know, Part of the part of the trick for locating the three buildings was, you know, how can we do it In such a way to to limit the impacts On the wetlands and stay out of them And have have the buildings fit on the site at all, so.
It's a pretty robust Water, you know, runoff containment system that's that's going in there for the building, but it's actually, you know, planned, you know, for the the other two buildings. So you don't have to get back in there and add to it in the future. So.
Great.
The other thing, Joe, is that we will be removing all the invasive species that are on the site and then Substituting those with With indigenous plantings, a significant amount of trees and other plantings in that area.
Yep, that's that's great. I've heard some people think that non golfers are in, you know, the species that need to be removed Just have the golfers there. But no, this is this is really very informative. I appreciate your efforts here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. This is, it's really exciting to see to see the pictures. This is an aggressive timetable, but I really appreciate how quickly you're working, especially, You know, towards potentially a town meeting for next year. I would also just comment, I really like the design of the building. I like I like its simplicity. I think that some of the features there are a little bit of, as you said, kind of a nod to agriculture and some of Hingham's history. But it's also kind of simple, and I think with the town owned Country Club And something that's accessible to the public. I, you know, I I just think it really fits. I think it's really suitable to to what we're doing. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment? Actually, before I open it up to the public, Christine and Bill, I don't know if either one of you has anything to add.
No, I guess I would just say this is Christine Smith, Chairman of the Country Club Management Committee, and Just, you know, thanks to the team. They've, as you pointed out, Mary, they have, they've worked A lot of hours in a short period of time, and they've got, you know, an aggressive schedule. This is a facility that that never closes. And so to be able to, you know, sort of Schedule things the way they have and and look to the future with accommodating Camps and and users, I think it's been a very, you know, thoughtful, thorough process. And I, you know, I thank them and, you know, we do look forward to, there'll be more public input. I think people are more Interested in the town pool than they are in a maintenance facility and remind people that, you know, this is really being It really started off as a safety concern for employees, and that's one of the reasons that we've been trying to move this forward So quickly and and the Country Club. The pandemic has actually been Good to the Country Club in a certain way because people have really enjoyed golfing and taken advantage of that. So The Country Club is in is in terrific hands, you know, under the management of Kevin Whalen and our Country Club Management Committee, and we're excited about the future to celebrate the 100th year anniversary in 2022.
Great. Bill Friend, anything to add?
Only thing I would add is that I've been involved with a lot of projects for the town and in private, and I'm Very pleased with the way that our professionals, Taylor and Chris and their their organizations have, they're very, very organized and right on top of things and 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 JR, JR has been doing a wonderful job too. So I I'm kind of an observer more than a participant, and I, what I've seen has been very good.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you for us for being here tonight. And anyone in the public, a question or comment with respect to the Anyone in the public, a question or comment with respect to this update from the country Okay, seeing none. You know, Kevin, I want to thank you and everybody on your team. And I also just want to take this opportunity to tell you how beautiful the country club looks right now. I was, you know, it's obvious that you and your team have been working hard to make sure that the course is in great condition and just really appreciate all the effort that goes into making that happen.
Well, it wouldn't happen without the efforts of Jake Silver, who's on the phone, and also his staff. I mean, he does wonders with the course. And we truly appreciate his efforts. And of course, Chris Riley managing the front of the house as well. So it's a team effort and I appreciate the words, Mary.
Yeah, and we noticed, I know I was over there last week, and the parking lot was pretty full, the restaurant's starting to fill up. It's, I think it's hopefully going to be a very good season all the way around for the country club. And we know all the work that goes into that. So thank you. And we will look forward to getting future updates on the status of not only the maintenance facility, but also the pool as we move forward. So again, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
The next item of business on our agenda is the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Logistics and COVID-19 Protocols. Town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, May 8th at 2:00 p.m. at the High School Multipurpose Field with rain dates of May 15th and 16th. I'm going to turn this over to Tom Mayo and Michelle Montegor to give us a preview of logistics and protocols.
Great, thank you very much, Mary. I'll be brief and I'll turn it over to Michelle for the details. As everyone knows, this will be our third outdoor town meeting here in Hingham during the pandemic. We've had some pretty good luck with weather to date. So I'm hoping that that continues on May 8th. As Mary said, we have the rain dates on the 15th and 16th as well, just in case. But there are a number of protocols in place to keep people safe, as there have been at previous town meetings. And I will let Michelle walk us through all those details.
Sure, thanks, Tom and Mary. I will just pull up the map because I think it's a little bit easier to look at visual. All right, I'll zoom in and out so people can see. But just to orient everyone in this map, up here in the top is Hingham High School. Pleasant Street is up on the top and Union Street is on the right side. So we're looking at this aerial of the multipurpose field. It's going to look similar to years past. Let me zoom in a little bit, where we're going to set up all the chairs on the field facing the away team bleachers. And that's where we're going to have the town moderator, town officials, the advisory committee, et cetera. We're going to have five sections of chairs and all of the chairs will be spaced about six to eight feet apart. It's eight feet apart, but by the time you take the chair into account, the actual space between them is about six or six and a half. So we are going to ask that people social distance, just like they did last summer and last fall. We are, Tom said it starts at 2:00 p.m. I think we are hoping that, the first one was a little bit too hot, the second one in the fall was a little bit chilly. Hopefully, this is the Goldilocks of town meetings and the weather is just right on May 8th. But we would encourage people to dress appropriately for the weather. Feel free to bring blankets if it's a little chilly. Feel free to bring umbrellas like we did last June if you want to create a little bit more shade over your chair. We are not going to do tents on the field this time because we think the weather should cooperate. But some of the things that we are doing differently in working with the Commission on Disabilities, and Diane Denapoli will talk a little bit more about this, up here at the near entrance B, we're going to have a section that's reserved for folks with disabilities or mobility issues. That's the turquoise section you see here. The reason we're putting it there is that it will be located most closely to the handicap parking spaces. And entrance B will also be the area where you can get dropped off if you can't walk that far or can't, you know, need to be closer to the seat. We're going to shift the guest section back here. This is the pink. So that's for people who are non-residents or non-voters. You'll be able to sit there. Often, it's our folks in the media and it's a lot of our staff. As usual, there will be three entrances to town meeting, A over here, B here, and C down here. Those kind of correspond to the three different parking areas, which are behind the high school on the left, the front lot over here, and then farther down, Union Street, kind of the far lot is closest to entrance C. In a normal, non-pandemic year, we would run shuttles from the South Shore Baptist Church, but because of COVID and social distancing precautions, we're not going to do that for this town meeting. There will be two restrooms available down here in the fieldhouse. And then over here, near entrance A, we will have accessible porta potties. There'll be microphones. You can see the M's throughout the map where people can participate if they'd like to make a comment. All of those will be cleaned between each speaker and the windscreen will also be replaced between each speaker. We're just trying to take extra precautions to not transmit any COVID during this event. We have not had issues in the past and we'd like to keep the same track record. There will be hand sanitizing stations throughout the venue available at each microphone and other places. Check-in at each of the three registration desks will be contactless and there'll be, our town clerk and her staff and our IT team will be behind screens. And we ask that everyone tries to maintain social distance while they're registering and checking in. And anytime that you're on the field or in the event, we ask that you stay six feet apart and we also ask that you keep your mask on. We'll have two water stations at the front of the field. And we'll have, just in case we have a lot more turnout for this annual town meeting, we'll have an overflow seating in the back bleachers here, in the home bleachers. But I think that is the general overview. Third time's a charm. Hopefully, we will return to something a little bit more normal next year, but we are looking forward to this on Saturday, the 8th.
Great. Michelle, did you also, and I know we're going to have a discussion with the Commission on Disabilities, but with respect to this meeting, we also, could you maybe speak to the tools that the town is making available for those who are visually or auditory, with auditory needs?
Sure, I'm trying not to steal too much of Diane's thunder.
You can tell me to hold off on that if you want.
Well, just briefly, and she can go into the details. We are, so the audio vendor is going to be offering assisted listening devices. We have 50 of them right now for folks who have hearing impairments and we'll be able to work with people. Those will mostly be available at entrance B along with a staff person to help them figure that out. But we'll have them available at the other two entrances. And then we'll put out some messages too. If people would like to request a large print warrant, we can make one in our office and have that available as well. We'll look forward to working with Diane and her group in the future to make sure that when we return to the indoor town meetings, that's hopefully a more permanent situation. We'll make sure we can make those as accessible as possible and have some of these resources available going forward.
Great. Joe, any questions for Michelle or Tom with respect to the logistics and COVID protocols?
I really don't. They've pulled off two events very successfully so far and looking forward to the next one. Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
No questions. Looking forward to it.
I would just add, you know, there's a lot that goes into making town meeting run efficiently. It just kind of doesn't happen. And Tom and Michelle, you and your team, and I know Chief Murphy and Chief Jones and Susan Sarny and many others have been involved in this. It, the planning, the execution, it's really just been terrific. And it affords us all the opportunity to come and participate. As the moderator likes to say, you know, you don't go to town meeting, you are town meeting. Without all this logistical effort, that wouldn't happen. And with an open town meeting, it's particularly challenging because you never know in any given year how many people will be coming. And we have an obligation to have a seat for any one of our registered voters who wants to participate. So very, very much appreciative of the efforts, particularly given the circumstances that we've had to deal with with COVID.
Mary, thank you for mentioning the Chiefs, Chief Murphy, Deputy LeChance, Captain Becker, Chief Jones, Deputy O'Shea and Sergeant Kilroy and their whole teams are really crucial to this. Our public safety team always has plans in place and they sort of make it easy for me and Tom and the board and the moderator to focus on the business of the meeting and everything involved there because they're just handling it behind the scenes. They've got plans in place for anything to happen and for folks who may have a medical emergency, et cetera. But appreciate everything that they're doing to allow us to focus on the business at hand.
And we're going to cross our fingers that Michael Page is going to give us a good weather forecast for May 8th. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment about the town meeting logistics and COVID-19 protocols? Okay, Michelle and Tom, just a question. Will that map or will any information be posted on the website just to kind of let people know what to expect, what's available?
I think the map is up already, but we need to get some messaging out, email, an email message. We'll put it on the website, we'll put it on social media. And then Harbor Media is going to help us with some PSAs. And I know Dan and her team are also working on amplifying the message, especially around accessibility and what will be offered. So we'll start to launch that out shortly.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to roll into our next agenda item, which is an update from the Commission on Disabilities. As folks may be aware, Hingham had a Commission on Disabilities for many years. And for one reason or another, the Commission was not active. And through the Talent Bank process last year and at the urging of citizens, including the Commission's Chair, the board appointed a Commission on Disabilities, which has re-engaged. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to provide an update. I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of the Commission on Disabilities, Diane Denapoli. And Diane, I know that you have your Commission presence, so I might invite you to call your Commission to order. And then I believe you have a presentation that Michelle is going to, Michelle will be driving from her office.
Yes, thanks very much, Mary. I'd like to just call the Commission on Disabilities to order. I believe we have a quorum. Mary, do we need to do anything else with that at this point?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, so Michelle, if you don't mind, we're going to be doing, she's going to be driving the technology piece, which is great. So again, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're going to be doing sort of a high-level overview of what we've done to date and what we're doing currently and what we hope to do in the future. So again, here's our first slide. You can advance, Michelle. For the purposes of this presentation, I thought it was important that we all sort of start with a definition of what a disability is. And again, that term can have many implications and legal parameters. So for the purposes of our committee, our commission, we are choosing to use a broad definition to hopefully help as many people in town as possible. And you see here, it says, "Any condition is considered a disability if it has a long-term effect on your normal day-to-day activity." And this includes a range of mental health conditions alongside more obvious physical disabilities. That's from the DSM-5. I use that because I like the slide, the visual here. I think it shows the very wide variety of people and how a disability can affect you socially, emotionally, intellectually, physically, and in many other aspects of your life. So for the purposes of this commission, we again want a broad definition of disabilities. If we could continue to the next slide. So this is sort of a population overview of individuals with disabilities in Hingham. On the left, you'll see, I'm sure you're all very familiar with the work that Gordon Carr and his team did in the master plan. And in this slide, it sort of gives you an overview of where we are and also where we are in relation to Massachusetts. For this slide, it's interesting, you see that a large majority of our citizens with disabilities are in the senior range. One thing I did want to point out, this slide, which is in the master plan, this uses a little bit more of a different definition than, say, the public schools would use, which is the IDEA definition of a disability. So Susan Vennis and her team are so kind to send me this information as of today, 4/27/21. The Hingham Public Schools has 620 students that are actually on IEPs. This does not include 504. This has a significant growth since I chaired CPAC of probably about 100 students. And it's broken down this chart by age. So you'll see compared to the data that was in the master plan, again, there's quite a few hundreds of children who are not necessarily captured in that graphic. And again, I want to thank everyone for their continued effort in relation to enhancing special ed. It's an area, obviously, that needs significant improvement and cooperation. And I thank the town for looking and moving that ahead. If we could advance the slide, Michelle? Thank you. So the Commission on Disabilities were reestablished by the Selectmen in the summer. And again, we do report directly to the Selectmen. I want to thank them during a very crazy year for taking the time to put this as a priority. Really like to thank Chair Power. She has been a phenomenal liaison, has been very helpful, giving us guidance and introduction as to how to proceed. And, you know, again, just she's been very, very helpful. Gordon Carr was also a really early advocate for including the Commission in his master plan, or I should say, our master plan, but I think of it as Gordon's. And, you know, again, that was very helpful, kind of seeing the desire in the town to do this. We met for the first time in December, so we've only been together five months and we have not all met in person due to COVID. So I actually look forward to seeing everybody in person at one point. We're a five-person volunteer board consisting primarily of Hingham residents with disabilities. And I think that's really important because it allows people, it kind of gives the firsthand knowledge of what it is like to be an individual with a disability in Hingham. When someone is advocating for something, Jesus, have I learned so much just learning from people on this commission already. We hold monthly meetings and follow open meeting law. And all information, our agendas and notes can be found on the town website. We can receive tax-deductible donations by either residents or businesses. And I bring that up only because most Commissions on Disabilities are funded by handicap parking fines. And we don't happen to have a lot of those in Hingham, which I suppose is a good thing, but it does challenge us as far as fundraising. So we will be looking to how to expand that moving forward. And if anyone would like to donate or like to know anything more about the Commission, our website is down at the bottom, the COD@hangham/massdoc. So if we could advance, Michelle? So this might be my favorite slide. Who serves on the Commission? We have a really great team. I thank them for joining the meeting tonight. I see my co-chair, Dr. Stephanie Gertz, is on. Do you want to wave? Thank you. Megan Baker is our secretary. I know she has been on, was on earlier. Maria Loughlin and Keith German, who we all know in town. So we have a great board. It's small. We are looking to grow that board to represent different types of disabilities in town. Particularly interested in growing to see if we can add some seniors so they can give us their point of view directly on what it's like to be a senior with a disability in town. So I'd like to thank them. Five months, but I think we've done a lot. So if we could move the slides? So what does the Commission on Disabilities do in Hingham? The purpose of the Commission is to improve the lives of people with disabilities in Hingham. And I know I'm probably talking too much, but I think that should be read again. The purpose of the Commission is to improve the lives of people with disabilities in Hingham. So how we're hoping to do that is to promote full integration of individuals with disabilities in our community, provide information and referrals for individuals or businesses on matters related to individual disabilities or the ADA, and participate in forums such as this or town meeting that raises awareness of people with disabilities in the ADA and coordinate and carry out programs that can again assist people in Hingham with disabilities. Next slide? So when we sort of met and thought about how to get this going, especially in COVID, I think we really had to be strategic and kind of dubbed Phase 1, let's roll. Something we've been trying to get up and running for a while, so when we got the chance, we ran. So the board was appointed by the Board of Selectmen. As I said, we had our first meeting in December on Zoom. And at that time, I was nominated the Chair, established regular meetings with Board of Selectmen Liaison, Mary Power, and consulted with Mass Department of Disabilities. Really important to kind of get some ideas of best practices, what are other Really important to kind of get some ideas of best practices, what are other towns doing, what's worked in other areas? Drafted bylaws, Dr. Gertz was appointed and as well as Megan Baker at that time to the board. Drafted admission state statements, set up our emails, all those administratively you have to do before you can really reach out. Started in this last part where we drafted a townwide survey designed to better gauge the needs of the town. Again, we don't want to be theoretical or just go on our knowledge. We really need input from people in town who have a disability to date. We've already got about 40 responses and it's really only was a soft roll last week. So it's been really good so far just reading through those and seeing what kind of information we're getting back. And again, the survey was very high level, it's introduction and introductory and brief. So I have received comments, people wanted to know more about schools and various specific things of that nature. But we'll probably have to work with CPAC on that moving forward. And again, working with the Board of Selectmen's Office, Michelle and Mary and Sharon have been absolutely wonderful with the town meeting. I've learned a lot about the complexities of the town meeting for sure. Next slide, please, Michelle. So outreach, again, this is information on our survey. The survey will, is online right now. It's brief, but I think it gives us a really good idea of how to move forward. This, the survey will also be on a paper version in the Hingham Light Bill in June. So I'd like to thank Keith and the Hingham Light Management for making that really possible. I think that'll be great to get a paper version in people's hands who may not either have access to the internet or feel comfortable doing that. That survey can be dropped in the black box detention, Keith German, outside of Town Hall. And ideally, we'd like to get these back by about July so we can really crunch the data and have information by the fall to help guide our work moving forward for Q4. So next slide, please. So town meeting, as Michelle and Tom kind of gave you an overview, May 8, hoping for great weather. The Goldilocks meeting, I like that term. We've been working very closely with everyone just to try to understand what can we do in an outside environment with an open meeting? And a town meeting in and of itself presents a lot of challenges for accessibility. It's a bit of an outlier in our democratic process. It's the only time you vote that you have to physically be there at a certain time and attend and stay and physically participate. So that in and of itself can be challenging to anyone with a disability. You can't vote in advance, you can't vote by mail. So really do appreciate, you know, looking at how we can grow and how we can make that better with reservations that can be made for individuals with mobility issues or the listening devices. I think that will be a really good step. And when we can move indoors, hopefully next year, it will be so much easier to coordinate other sort of accommodations. And again, we'll have more feedback from people. So I think that will be, you know, this is the hardest time to start it, we're still doing it. And again, as Mary said, it's unpredictable. If you're outside, you don't know how many people, but you still have to make this all work. So if anyone has questions on what kind of accommodations may be available, please email the town administrator, the email's there, or call the Board of Selectmen's Office. They should be able to walk you through reserving a seat or if a listening device is, you know, to reserve that for you. If you'd like a warrant article or just general questions about, you know, where can I get dropped off? That will be made available. Michelle, next slide. So again, here, Michelle did show this graphic, but I love maps. So I had to include this, that, that Aqua M area will be the reserved mobility area. Again, it's near the parking, it's near drop-off. I think it was, you know, after looking at that, we felt collectively that was the best spot for people to kind of congregate. If more spots are needed, I'm sure we can do that. But again, this was sort of a, a starting point. So we did increase handicapped spots for the day of the event. There'll be signage for parking so people understand where to go. Again, we're trying to ensure mobility-friendly seating, large warrant articles, listening devices with assistance. So if you're not too sure how to use that, the vendor will be on site to walk you through that. And assistance on the field shouldn't need arise during the town meeting. Next slide. So Phase Two is sort of outreach continued. The Commission on Disability will reach out to various stakeholders to try to forge cooperative dialogue about what it means to have a disability in the community or how we can work together. Data from the townwide, wide survey will be analyzed and prioritized and we will share those with applicable groups. The commission will research potential funding mechanisms, both publicly and privately. Again, it's, it, it's something we're looking forward to working with anyone in town who may have interest in helping. Please reach out, you know, $5 is more than what we have now. I was saying to Stephanie when we reviewed this over the weekend, it was pretty easy doing our budget sheet because it's zero today. So next year, I promise it will be more. I don't know how much more, but we will have some more than zero. And if you're interested in making a donation, again, please feel free to email us. We'd be happy to talk with anyone and everyone who'd like to participate in this group. Next slide. So next steps. This is a quote that I have kept on my desk and on probably most of my work binders ever since for 10 years I've been advocating for my own children with disabilities. And it kind of keeps me focused and reminds me that this is a long haul. "The woods are lovely, dark and deep, but I have promises to go and miles to keep, miles to go before I sleep." Next slide. So Phase Three, I think is where we are now, miles to go. I'd like to thank everyone for helping get this commission off the, off the ground. Selectmen, Eileen McCracken, Steve Becker, who'd been phenomenal helping us get through newbie kind of faux pas that I had probably made. And I want to thank my other board members for their support, their energy, their passion and what they have taught me already. Couple of recommendations or observations we have to date is Zoom. Keeping Zoom going in a post-pandemic environment, particularly with live transcription is going to be really key to allowing more people to participate in government, especially individuals with disabilities. At our first meeting, I was remiss and I did not turn on live transcript. I wasn't familiar with it, I wasn't very familiar with Zoom. And unfortunately, Megan said, "I really can't participate." Megan Baker, who has hearing challenges, "I really can't participate because the live transcript isn't on." I felt very bad and thank God Megan and Keith worked immediately to work with IT and that was corrected. And I think many boards and commissions now use the live transcription. It's a small thing for some, it's free and it adds a tremendous level of accessibility. So I would hope that even when we can meet again, hopefully in the fall, there still will be some Zoom access for meetings with live transcription continuing. Moving forward, the, there is a, as you know, a warrant article proposing that the Commission on Disability, other individuals in town will participate in the ADU Study Committee. That's Pennington Meeting, but I, I would imagine that would go forward. And that's something that could be very useful to see what kind of housing, how can we provide additional opportunities perhaps in the town for housing for just people with disabilities? The COD will participate in the Hingham Unity Council's presentation on, sort of the day in the life of a person with a disability. That's going to be in October. They've been hosting, I think it's monthly meetings, sort of about race and LGBTQ individuals in town. So it's a panel discussion that Stephanie Gertz will be moderating with other individuals in town with disabilities. So that's October 20th, I believe. I think the data is subject to change, I don't want to announce that. But we're also looking to add members to the board and or people who are just interested in helping or volunteering in any way. Particular interest is someone again over 60. But, you know, again, if someone is a lawyer, someone is an artist, someone is a former teacher who'd like to volunteer their time, we look forward to hearing from you because we really need, um, we, you know, there's a lot of work to be done and we need an all-hands-on-deck approach. And lastly, create a funding strategy. You know, again, want to be flexible, want to be aware of, of what we need to do and look at that moving forward. And Michelle, next slide. So I, again, thank you all and off, I want to open it up if anyone has questions or feedback.
Great, Diane, thank you, that was an excellent presentation and so appreciative of all the great work that you and the commission have done in a very short period of time. Joe Fisher, questions, comments for Diane or the commission?
Yes, well, first, thank you for the presentation and for your commitment and really for the commitment of everyone in your group who, who really making a difference in town. I just wanted to note that, you know, COVID-19 has created special issues for, that, that deals specifically with disability rights. Within the last 12 months, the Attorney General of Massachusetts issued special guidance on disability rights during COVID-19, specifically workplace rights, healthcare rights. So this is an issue that's obviously unique to COVID-19 or being exacerbated by COVID-19. And it's so timely that this commission is there to, our commission is there to, to help folks address the issues. So I'm really so glad that all of you are, are stepping up, so thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Bill?
I was going to say, you've already accomplished a lot in just a few months. So it's great to see the work you're doing and just, as you continue to see areas where we can improve things now, just let us know. Like the town meeting and how, how we have the information in our meetings like you mentioned earlier. So if there are little things that we can enact now to make improvements, let us know because we'll be happy to do it.
Thank you, Bill.
I'd, I'd add a couple of things. I just want to let Bill and Joe know that the bylaws that have been drafted, those have been sent to John Coughlin and the commission's been patient, understanding that John was very focused on, you know, reviewing the warrant and everything. But we are just asking John to, you know, take a look at that. With respect to the membership, Joe and Bill, you may recall that we have the latitude and I, I believe we can appoint up to seven, seven members of the commission. And this is a commission that has some particular requirements, again, based on Mass General Law. But, but I think what Diane and her commission are finding is that, is that there is an important constituency as represented in, in some of the numbers she gave, that, that they believe would enhance the work of the commission. And so as you're going through the Talent Bank process, which, you know, you will begin with the moderator over the summer, I would ask you to consider whether it would be appropriate to expand the membership of the commission. Again, in accordance with the requirements as, as set forth by Massachusetts General Laws, I think that the, the addition of some, of, of one or two people representing the senior citizen population would be an enhancement, both in terms of getting the word out of the commission, but also helping, helping with the work. And, you know, Diane and commission, one thing I would say with respect to funding is that in, in a lot of ways, as we, as we think about the commission, we should be thinking just with all of our work, how to, how to make all of our work and all the services in the town accessible to people. And so, for example, we have a budget for town meeting. In my mind, things like the listening devices, the large print warrants, that should go into the town meeting budget. And, and so while you may not have a dedicated funding stream right now, I think as you continue to build these relationships with other departments, boards and commissions, you may find that as they are doing their work, they have an opportunity to carve out, you know, a, a little bit of funding. Because I think the ideal here would be that our focus, our focus on individuals with a disability informs the work. It's not kind of an extra thing that we have seven people, you know, kind of looking at. So I, I know, I know it may kind of feel like, gosh, what, what can we do with, without a lot of funding? I, I think that there are some places where town resources can be, you know, can be brought to bear. So, you know, I, I would, I would encourage you to, to, to think of that as well. Is there anyone in the public who either has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the, the update we just heard from the Commission on Disabilities? Okay. Diane, rest of the commission, thank you so much for your great work. If, if what you've accomplished over the last four months is any indication, this is going to be a pretty high performing group. And, you know, we look forward to continuing to work with you and to, to, to build on the great progress that, that has been made in a short period of time. So
Thank you, Mary.
Appreciate everybody joining us and, and we'll, we'll see everybody on May 8.
Thank you.
Right, that Goldilocks meeting, right? Thank you. Next item of business for the board, we have two appointments. The first, I believe the board received notification from the Town of Cohasset that they have proposed Cohasset representative to the Weir River Water System Citizen Advisory Board, so I would accept a motion.
I'll move to appoint Stefan Girardi as the Town of Cohasset's representative to the Weir River Water System Citizen Advisory Board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Great, and we also have a recommendation from Chief Jones, who was on the line for appointments for special police officers. And this is an annual vote that the board takes. The special police officers are appointed typically for a one-year term. Chief Jones, I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to add before the board took up the appointments?
Uh, no, just maybe explain what exactly the special officers are. So they, they supplement our full-time officers, they work security at events as well as traffic details and security details. They're trained by the same training council that trains the full-time officers and they all have full police authority once they're appointed by the board.
Great, thank you. And I note that many of them are either, either current members, current, current members of our public safety team or retired members of our public safety team. Bill or Joe, I would accept a motion?
I would make a motion to reappoint the following individuals, a special police officer for the Town of Hingham for a term ending April 30th, 2022. Raymond Abro, Leslie Badger, Kenneth Corson, Joseph Driscoll, Michael Fahey, George Kelly, Dylan Leahy, Robert Mansfield, Michael McQ, Michael Murray, John Narcidis, John Norris, Mitchell Powers, Matthew Puleo, Mike O'Reilly, James Taylor, James Tean, Danyus Varma, Varma Moody, and James Wells.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you and thank you, Chief Jones, appreciate your being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next item of business on the agenda is Inside Town Finances, volume 14. Volume 14 deals with assessments. Starting out, and Michelle's going to drive, Michelle is driving tonight for everybody. What does the assessor do? You know, we, we hear that title. Basically, the job of the assessor is to determine the fair and equitable valuation of all real and personal property in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws. And for the Town of Hingham, that means assessing 8,000 parcels of property, 300 billable personal property accounts, 20,000 motor vehicle excise accounts, and 1,400 boat excise accounts. So there's a lot of, a lot of valuation that goes on. And within those 8,000 parcels of real estate property, it's important to note that 89% of them are residential and 11% are commercial. And kind of remember that pie chart and remember those statistics as, as we get to a subsequent, as we get to a subsequent question. Slide, please, Michelle. So one of the questions is how are real estate assessments determined? And basically, again, and this is driven by Massachusetts General Law, basically assessed values are based on what we call full and fair values are based on what we call full and fair cash value, or 100% of, of the fair market value as of an assessment date each year. And in our case, and in the cases of most communities, it's January 1st. So for example, our fiscal year, the fiscal year 22 begins on July 1st, 2021. The assessment date will be the property assessed as of January 1st, 2021. So if, if, if Joe Fisher were to put an addition on his house after January 1st, and it was completed in March, his home, his, his next assessment date would be the following January 1st. Factors that are used to determine market value. And this assessment process is ongoing. This is an ongoing process. Recent selling prices in neighborhoods, the quality of the construction that takes place, the condition of a, of a parcel of land, its neighborhood designation. There are different neighborhood designations in Hingham. So for example, Crow, the Crow Point neighborhood, that has been a very desirable neighborhood location. So that affects assessed value, as well as the building, the building size and the lot area. So those are the factors that our Board of Assessors uses to determine the market value. Next slide, Michelle. So a question that has come up over the past few months, as we've talked about the budget, is how do these assessments compare to actual real estate sales? You know, we, we had a house in our neighborhood that its assessed value was a certain amount. It sold a couple of months ago for a lot more than what it was assessed for. In the last year, if you compare the total assessed value of all parcels to the total selling price, we were at a 90, 93%. Now, obviously, the goal is to be as close to 100% as possible. Anything above 90, especially as you're getting close to 95, is, is pretty good. Now, we are in an unusual market right now. Our assessor will say, right now, you have some market dynamics going on across Massachusetts in communities like Hingham, where you have parcels that are going for way above their assessed value. That's a little bit of an unusual situation right now. But in general, if you look at the ratio of assessed value to selling prices in Hingham, they're pretty close. The next question. So some people say, well, gosh, if Hingham assessed, if, if our assessments were higher, we would be collecting more property taxes. That's actually not the case, because assessments do not determine the tax levy. Proposition 2 and 1/2, which we've talked about in previous volumes, particularly in Volume 1, determines the tax levy. That says, however much we levied in one year, we can increase that by about 2 and 1/2% and add money for new growth. Assessed values come into play when we determine how to apportion that tax levy so that everybody pays their fair share. So again, if you think about that 93%, that is not suggesting that we are under taxing in the community. It's, again, just the method of how, how the tax pie is divided up. The way I like to think about it is Proposition 2 and 1/2 determines the size of the pie. Assessments determine how that pie is divided up. So next slide, Michelle. So again, what's the difference between an abatement and an exemption? Those are some phrases that we use for, for assessments. An abatement is a reduction in a real estate valuation. So somebody may look on the assessor database and say, it says that my house has four bathrooms, my house has two bathrooms. That's a correction that would result in a change to assessed value. Or somebody may say, there were property sales in my neighborhood, my assessed value went up by 25%. I don't think it should have gone up that much. And the Board of Assessors, the independently elected Board, reviews and acts upon those abatement requests. So basically, an abatement, again, a hypothetical example, a house is assessed at $800,000. Property owner goes through an abatement process that reduces the valuation to $775,000. That's an example of an abatement. An exemption is a reduction in real estate tax. And that has to do with a taxpayer meeting qualification set forth by the Commonwealth. And if you go to our assessor's webpage, they have a list of all the different property tax exemptions that are available. A kind of rule of thumb to think about this is abatements relate to a property where exemptions relate to a taxpayer. And then the last, last slide, Michelle. So this has come up at certain times. Hingham has a single rate for all property taxes. Would a split tax rate allow the town to collect more in property taxes? And again, the answer here is no. All a split tax rate would do is shift the burden, the tax burden, from one property class to another. The size of the pie stays the same. How it's, how it's divided up is, is, is really what assessments are all about. And each year, our Board of Assessors goes through what they call a tax classification hearing. And the purpose of the tax classification hearing is to determine whether or not Hingham should have a one tax rate or a split tax rate. And each year, our Board of, our assessor's office and the Board of Assessors, they, in a public meeting, review the information and they make a recommendation. They then bring it to the Board of Selectmen, where again, in a public hearing, we review the information and we take a vote. Over, Hingham has always had one tax rate. And a big reason why we have one tax rate goes back to that pie chart that we started with, and the fact that 89% of our parcels are residential. If we were to shift some of the tax burden from residential to commercial, the benefit or the gain, the, the benefits to the residential taxpayers would be small, but the impact on the, on the commercial and industrial businesses would be very high. And again, this is something that we go through every year in a public process. And so, you know, the considerations that, that, that have informed these votes in recent years are maintaining the vitality of our local businesses. That was a concern even before the pandemic. These are businesses that contribute to local fundraising efforts. Many of them are owned by people who live in our community. And also, one of the things that we've all been talking about is how do we, as a town, grow revenue? And a big way to grow revenue in this town is through new growth. That's, that's, again, that allows the pie to get bigger. Some of our biggest opportunity for new growth is commercial development. Our single tax rate makes Hingham a more, a more desirable destination for businesses who potentially want to, you know, be located on the South Shore. And as we're looking at how to fund a lot of the wonderful operating and capital initiatives in this town, new growth is critical. Adopting a split tax rate would have the impact of raising our commercial and industrial property taxes to a much greater degree than residential. And again, this is done in a public meeting every year, but in, you know, during my tenure on the Board, the decision has been that until that ratio of commercial and industrial properties change to, in a significant way, it really doesn't seem like the adoption of a split tax rate would, would be worthwhile. But again, that's a decision that'll get taken up again this coming November, December timeframe. So that's a quick look at real estate assessments. Bill or Joe, any questions?
No. Great presentation. Thank you, Mary.
No question, Mary, but I would, I can't agree with you anymore. I, when I was a candidate for this office, I talked a lot about the potential for a split tax rate and trying to generate more, more revenue. But, you know, the, we just don't have the business, with the commercial entities available to make a difference. And the brunt of it would really bear on small businesses in town. So, you know, I think you're right on with your assessment there.
And, you know, the good news here is it's an assessment that the town gets to make once a year. And, and it's a, and it's a very public process. So, you know, both at the Board of Assessors and through, through the Selectmen's Office. Questions from the public on, or comments on Inside Town Finances? Okay, next item of business is the COVID-19 update.
Thank you very much, Mary. All right, so the COVID-19, excuse me, the COVID-19 update for today, April 27th. So as of today, confirmed COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts totaled 642,036. According to the public health data from the Mass. DPH released last week, the town's designation yet again remains yellow, indicating a medium risk of spread in the community. There have been 80 new cases of COVID-19 in Hingham over the past 14 days, and a total of 1,907 cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. The average daily incidence rate for the Town of Hingham was 23.8 per 100,000 residents, and our positivity rate was 2.81% for the previous 14 days. Regarding vaccine rollout, the general public ages 16 and above became eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine in Massachusetts as of Monday, April 19th. According to the DPH's daily COVID-19 vaccine report, nearly 2.4 million people in Massachusetts have been fully vaccinated as of today. As of April 22nd, approximately 36% of Hingham residents have been fully vaccinated and up, which is up from 27% two weeks ago. Last Friday, the CDC decided to resume the use of the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine. We were notified by the DPH that all providers may resume administration of the J&amp;J vaccine effective immediately. The town had received J&amp;J vaccines to administer to 10 homebound residents in Hingham. Town staff are reaching back out to those residents and will move forward with administering the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines for those of that group that are still interested. Regarding the state reopening guidance, so today, the Baker Administration announced that Massachusetts will take a number of additional steps to reopen over the next few months. Some of the key dates identified are April 30th, May 10th, May 29th, and on August 1st. So on April 30th, the Governor will relax the face coverings order for some outdoor settings. Face coverings will only be required outside and public when it's not possible to socially distance, and at other, and at other times required, required by sector-specific guidance. Face coverings will still be required at all times in indoor public places. Face coverings will also continue to be required at all times at events, whether held indoors or outdoors, and whether held in a public space or private home, except when eating or drinking. At smaller gatherings in private homes, face coverings are recommended, but actually not required. Changes going into effect on May, on Monday, May 10th will impact some large venues, i.e. stadiums and arenas and the like, amusements and theme parks, road races, sports tournaments, and indoor singing. Changes potentially going into effect on Saturday, May 29th, may increase the gathering limits to 200 people indoors and 250 people outdoors for event venues, public settings, and private settings. Subject to the public health and vaccination data, the state may lift all industry restrictions as of August 1st. There are a lot of details to review and digest in today's announcements. We encourage everyone to read the press release on the state's website, which we will link to when we post this report on the town, on the town's website. That's it. Mary, you're muted.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for Tom?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Any members of the public questions on the COVID-19 update? Okay. Public comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Okay, Selectmen Town Administrator Reports, Michelle?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mary.
Tom?
Not tonight, thank you, Mary.
Joe?
Yes, so I do have some positive news. The MBTA Board met yesterday and announced additional ferry service being restored effective May 22nd, including the direct Hingham service to Boston, weekend service, and also the stop at Logan Airport. So that is huge. It's reversing the service cuts that were announced about four months ago that suspended those routes due to the pandemic's impact. Weekend service, weekday service had been eliminated for direct routes, and the route was really just Hingham, then to Hull, and then into Boston. Now there will be the direct inbound service. There'll be 14 inbound trips during the week, 11 outbound trips from Boston to Hingham. And the Hingham-Hull ferry weekend service will return, as well as having the airport stops, both during the week as well as the weekend. So there's a lot of thanks. Representative Joe Moschino really spearheaded the effort, Senator Patrick O'Connor, the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, officials in our neighboring towns. And there were a lot of members of the Hingham community who, that made their voices heard, and the MBTA listened. So really, that's how this got accomplished. So I'm encouraging everyone, when they need to, jump on the ferry. There will be additional service restorations that will be announced in the coming weeks with respect to the Green Bush Line and bus service. Thank you.
Great. Bill?
This week, I'm going to be meeting with the Hingham Sports Partnership to talk about our funding initiative for the failed maintenance plan and talk a little about centralized scheduling and the future of fields in Hingham. So looking forward to the discussion.
Great, thank you.
Before you go on, I neglected to say that in light of, of the action, I think it would be appropriate for the town, and specifically this Board, to send a letter to the General Manager of the MBTA, Steve Poptek, and also to Jamie Tesler, who's the Mass. acting secretary, you know, really acknowledging their, their move to restore service and make it clear that we're, we're looking forward to growing public transportation. So with the Board's permission, I will craft that letter so it goes out promptly.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Great suggestion. Yep. Bill, anything else?
No, thank you.
I had a couple of things. I, I neglected to mention this while we were meeting with the Commission on Disabilities, but I see Diane is on. I just wanted to note that I saw something come up on social media today, that our state Senator Patrick O'Connor was named to the State Commission on Disability. So Senator O'Connor is going to be having a leadership role, and I'm, 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 I'm not remembering the specific committee that he's on, but it's, it's very much dealing with individuals with disabilities and making the state more accessible. So I think we both want to congratulate him. And Diane, he's going to be a very helpful resource, an even more helpful resource as we move forward. You may have heard during the discussion with respect to the TOSCA outside table service that Beach House Hingham, that's the snack shack, that is opening tomorrow. So looking forward to another great season. I wanted to let the public know that work is continuing on the Plymouth River Windows Project. There's some steps that have to take place with owners, project managers and things, and the school department and the school building committee are working diligently to just keep moving forward on that. The water company billing transition continues to go well. Our customer service center was overwhelmed with calls early last week because we all got letters about a billing transition. And we appreciate the efforts of SUEZ, both in bringing some additional resources in to deal with this temporary kind of spike in calls, but also all of the agents who were very patient and responsive to different questions. I do want to let people know that last week, if you called, you may have gotten a recorded message saying, you know, if you leave your name and number, we'll call back. I want to let people know that if you ever have a water emergency, the, the number that was contained in the letters that we received for billing, that number is manned for emergencies 24 hours a day. So if you call that number, the, there's a recording at the very beginning that says, you know, if this is an emergency, please press 1. If you press that, if you press 1, regardless of what time of day it is or what day of the week, a person will answer that phone. Along those lines, we would ask people to only use those for a true emergency. Water main breaks in the street, something's happening in, on your property, but that will be, that will be manned. And lastly, I want to mention that this And lastly, I want to mention that this Saturday is the opening of the Hingham Farmers Market. The Farmers Market, as we saw a few weeks ago in, in this board's approval, will be at Station Street. It will be very similar to how it was set up at the conclusion of last year, of, of last season. And I would just mention, I, I want to express my gratitude to Mark Cullings and the, the organizers. They asked if I could come and ring the opening bell on Monday, and I was really just so, so pleased to get that invitation and look forward to opening the market and having the market be, continue to be a vital resource in this community. So I think that concludes our business for tonight. We will be meeting next Tuesday, which will be May 4th. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.